If you wish to provide public testimony on a specific agenda item, please submit a registration form to the City Secretary's office before 5:00 P. M. Testimony must relate to the posted agenda item. All citizens will have a time limit of two minutes. Groups wishing to address the City Commission are encouraged to have one spokesperson.
And now from McAllen City Hall, a meeting of the McAllen City Commission.
Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to today's joint meeting with the support of City Commissioners as well as the McAllen Public Utility Board and continuing on with our regular City Commission agenda. I'll call this meeting to order. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. Everybody could rise, please.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody, please take a seat. We'll continue with the invocation, I mean, the presentation preparations later. At this time, on behalf of Mayor Villalobos, who extends his best wishes, he cannot be in attendance today. We're in a call to order, a joint meeting with the Council of the Public Utility Board. And thank you again, members of the Public Utility Board, for being here this afternoon. And I think-
Mr. Mayor Protem, we do not have a call at this time. He's on his way, I understand. Is he in?
He's about three minutes away.
Three minutes away?
He's three minutes away, if we want to. About three minutes away.
Any questions, Mr. City Manager?
Can we go ahead with the presentation?
Yeah, we can do that.
Can we go ahead with the presentation?
I'll go ahead and do, we have one presentation. Presentation of the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association Award with me, Mrs. Kate Moran. All right, so right before we continue with the presentation, I forgot. Mr. President, give us a vodka. Could you lead us in the invocation? Again, could everybody stand?
Well, first of all, I would like to have a moment of silence for those victims in Nashville on the tragic shootings, so be a moment of silence, please, before we go. Give me your prayers. Heavenly Father, I thank you for having us, having the privilege of serving our city. I pray, Father, that as we discuss our agenda and craft policies for our city, we will always put the people's interests above us, our own. Remind us, Father, that we are in the position not to be served, but to serve the public. Jesus Christ was king, came up not to be served, but to serve and ultimately die on the cross to save us. I also pray, Father, that we will uphold what is moral and rational. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Okay, so continuing on with our presentation, Mrs. Kate Moran. So this presentation is the Achievement of Excellence in Libraries Award, where this award is presented to the McAllen Public Library. Accepting the award is Kate Moran, for the year 2022, Achievement of Excellence in Libraries Award. And congratulations, Mrs. Moran.
Thank you. I want to introduce our board president, Dr. Joseph Ryan.
All right. Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Joseph Ryan. I'm an orthodontist, and I'm a proud president of McAllen Public Library and advisory board. For the ninth year in a row, McAllen Public Library has received the 2022 Achievement of Library Excellence Award that the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association. Applicants to this award must exhibit excellence in providing services to a variety of populations, in enhancing services and marking their programs and services in innovative ways, in promoting cultural, topical, and educational programming, literacy support, and summer reading programs, and pursuing community partnerships, and supporting workforce development, providing for digital inclusion, and training staff to serve our community with excellence. There are 550 public libraries in Texas. NPL was one of only 73 libraries to receive this award. We use the slogan, "Libraries are for everyone," and I can think of no better example than our recent oral languages festival, which brought in more than 3,000 visitors. For several hours, people of all ages, backgrounds, and abilities came together to celebrate our many cultural endeavors. It was a magical day of festive togetherness, food from around the globe and goodwill. Now looking forward to another year of excellence from the McAllen Public Library.
Mayor Protem, Commissioners, and City Manager, good evening. My name is Kate Moran, and I'm a library director. And in 2022, NPL welcomes more than 377,000 visitors, circulated more than 427,000 physical materials. Yes, people are still reading books, and 50,000 ebooks, and 81,000 people booked our study rooms and reading spaces, so very busy. We're able to accomplish these numbers because of our generous space and the support of our city. And I want to recognize and say thank you to all NPL staff. They are the ones who are out there really serving with passion and with excellence, providing to our youngest citizens as well as our older citizens. So this award is because of them. They make me proud. They make the city proud. Thank you.
All right, McAllen is proud. Thank you. Do we have our representatives? All right, then I'll continue on. Are we ready for the proclamation, Mr. City Manager?
Yes.
Let's begin with Red Crossman, Mr. David Luna. Mr. President?
Sir? Proclamation, State of Texas, County of Dalgo, City of McAllen. Whereas during American Red Cross Month in March, we celebrate the humanitarian spirit of McAllen, and we affirm our commitment to help ensure no one faces a crisis alone. And whereas caring for one another, it is at the heart of our community and exemplify the people of McAllen, whose simple acts of kindness through the Red Cross provide help and hope in people's most difficult moments, continuing the life-saving legacy of Clara Barton, who founded the organization more than 140 years ago to prevent and alleviate human suffering. And whereas every day, the ordinary individuals lend a helping hand to make an extraordinary difference for neighbors in need, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort for families displaced by home fires and other disasters, donating life-saving blood for cancer patients, accident victims, and people with cycle cell disease and other life-threatening conditions, supporting military members and veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenge of service, using vital skills like first aid and CPR to help others survive medical emergencies, or delivering international humanitarian aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by crises around the world. And whereas their support, voluntarism, and generous donations are critical to our community's resilience, we hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all of those who fulfill Clara Barton's noble words. You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it, and ask everyone to join in this commitment. Now thereof, I, Jose Pepe Caleza de Vaca, City Commissioner of City of McAllen, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the mayor and the city commission, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2023 as National Red Cross Month. Congratulations, Jeff.
Good evening. I want to thank you for this opportunity and this proclamation. My name is Mike Taylor. By profession, I'm the Deputy CEO for Tropical Texas by passion. I am a volunteer for the South Texas chapter of the American Red Cross, and I would ask you, as we held the moment of silence and thought about those victims of storms, that we think about how close we are here at home for one of our neighbors or many of our neighbors to be affected by natural disaster. As you know, the American Red Cross is an international organization. The South Texas chapter is here in the valley, is for the valleys, by the valley. It's our hope, on behalf and my honor, to thank you for this time and this proclamation on behalf of the volunteers and the employees, the staff of the American Red Cross here at home in the valley. Hopefully, this proclamation will get the word out a little bit more, maybe a couple more volunteers will step forward and find a way to share their time with their community. Hopefully, they'll find a way to go to redcross.org and look at that donation page and make even a small donation and state that they want to keep that support right here at home. It is only with local support of hours and dollars that our mission is possible, and we're here committed to our community to help in those times of need. And by the time something happens to one of our neighbors, it's too late to think about that donation. We need to be prepared in advance. That's why we're here, and that's why this proclamation means so much to our neighbors here in the valley. I want to thank you for this. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager? If you'd like, we can go ahead and start the joint meeting, and then we'll pick up the proclamations once we put up. On the dix. Very well. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. At this time, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners of City of McAllen, I'll call this joint meeting to order. Members of the Public Utility Board?
We have a call.
Call.
Meaning order.
Very well.
Meaning order. Like I said, we're here.
Mr. City Manager and Mr. Rega? Would you like to take away item one? Yes, sir. So we've got one item, Mayor Protem and members of the Public Utility Board, is consideration of approval of the annual comprehensive financial report. We have representative from Weaver here, Adam, and we have also a short presentation from our finance director, San Kyo Viasana. So with that, I'll hand it over to them.
Members of the commission and board, appreciate the opportunity to be here today and present to you the results of our audit for fiscal year ended September 30th, 2022. Presented to your finance committee, and I know management keeps you guys up to speed on the finances themselves throughout the year, so I will really spend our time speaking towards the audit, proceed, process of the audit, timing of the audit, findings of the audit, and management can, will have presentations related to the finances themselves afterwards. Please feel free to stop me if you have questions throughout the presentation, so I'm happy to address either during the presentation or afterwards. So as a reminder, we do look at our audit process as really a cyclical process. We begin our audit process for the following fiscal year as soon as we wrap up this audit. So we'll be working with the city's management, starting very soon to work on the 2023 audit. And so what that process looks like is we do things like reading commission minutes, review significant contracts, agreements, things like that throughout the year. Then we perform what we call interim fieldwork in generally August, summertime, August, September, before the organizations close the books, so that we're able to look at things like internal controls, processes, policies. And then once the books get closed, we come back out in December and January and actually look at the transactions themselves, look at the trial balance, dollars that are actually flowing through, balances, reconciliations, things like that. Then we work with management, reviewing the documents, the financial statements throughout kind of January and February, so we can come report to you in February and March. So as a reminder, we do perform our audit under a couple of different sets of standards. One is just generally accepted auditing standards, the same set of audit standards we would perform, any commercial engagement, a bank, an insurance company, a construction company, anybody else in your community. We layer on top of that governmental auditing standards, which has us, provides you a little bit more information related to independence, and also has us provide you some more information related to the procedures that we perform on internal controls over financial reporting. We also do perform some tests of compliance. We don't give an opinion on compliance to you, but we perform tests of compliance related to laws, regulations, contracts, grant agreements, such that we believe we can identify any non-compliance that might have a material impact on your financial statements. In other words, if there's any non-compliance that would require you to give back a substantial amount of money or lose a substantial amount of money or impact money that you've recognized, we believe that our tests would identify anything like that. If we had anything like that, we'd been bringing it to you before now. This wouldn't be the first you'd hear about it, so you can be comfortable with that. It's important to understand that we do perform what we consider to be a risk-based audit. We don't look at every check that goes out the door. We don't look at every purchase that the city or the utilities make. We go through a pretty robust risk assessment process that includes looking at significant agreements, reading minutes, talking with management, employees, making sure that we have a good understanding of what has gone on during the year. We like to communicate to you what some of those significant areas are where we really are focusing more of our audit attention, time and efforts. And so in the city's case, city and the utilities' case, all of the expenditures, expenditures, payroll-related, capital projects-related, just general dispersments, looking to make sure that all of these dispersments are appropriately approved, that they are falling within the budget, that they are being appropriately documented, and making sure that we feel comfortable that there being, money is being spent the way that the commission and the boards have directed. We also spend time looking at revenues and the related receivables, looking to make sure that you're recognizing revenues in the appropriate period that's reflective of how that revenue is actually being earned. That includes utility and bridge revenues, grant revenues, taxes, and other charges for services. Look at cash and investments, making sure that the cash being reported by the city, the investments being reported by the city actually exist, they're held where you say that they are being held, that the amounts are being, the balances are being reconciled regularly to make which reconciliations are important to prevent and detect any type of misstatements. And so we look to make sure those reconciliations are happening timely. We also spend a good amount of time looking at long-term debt. Debt can be complicated to record. Transactions are very large, and so we don't have significant concerns about things not getting recorded, but there are different ways to record transactions, and so we do like to spend a good amount of time on debt, making sure that it is being accurately reflected. We also do perform some tests of internal controls. We don't give an opinion on your internal controls. You haven't engaged us to do that, but we do perform tests of internal control sufficient that we are actually able to place some level of reliance on the internal controls over financial reporting, specifically related to general cash dispersments and payroll cash dispersments. Again, looking to make sure that these transactions are appropriately approved, they're appropriately coded, they're going to the right budget, so that they can be analyzed appropriately, et cetera. So these next two slides, you can really, if you listen to kind of nothing else that I say today, you can look at as the city's financial reporting and our audit report, report cards. And so I try to make it pretty straightforward, even color-coded for you. Green is good, red is bad, yellow is something that we want to discuss, so I like to make it really easy for everybody. So the first slide here is our kind of report on, related to the financial statements themselves, our, over the financial statements. And so you can see, we are, we have issued an unmodified, clean opinion on the financial statements. That's the highest level of opinion we're able to issue. With respect to internal control over financial reporting, we do not have any material weaknesses to report to you. We don't have any significant deficiencies to report to you, and we don't have any non-compliance that's material to financial statements that we need to report to you. So the next slide here is our, relates to our audit of the federal and state awards. So because of the amount of federal and state funding you do receive, and $750,000 is that threshold, so many people fall into this, into this boat where they need this audit. We perform what's called a single audit, and that's an audit that focuses our procedures on the way that grant money is spent, essentially federal and state grants, looking to make sure that you're meeting the grant requirements, that you're reporting appropriately, documenting controls appropriately, that sort of thing. And so we are issuing an unmodified, clean opinion report on our federal and state awards. We do not have any material weaknesses over internal control over the major programs. We do have one significant deficiency that's not a material weakness, so it's a lesser degree that I'll report to you momentarily here. I've also reported to the finance committee, and we don't have any additional audit findings, any actual non-compliance or anything like that to report to you. So just one item to expand on just a little bit. And so want to reiterate, this is an item that we identified specifically with respect to the testing of this grant, and it relates to some approval of payroll process during the year, some of the funding running through the Texas Anti-Gang Grant, the TAG Grant, for those of you that are familiar with it. Again, want to reiterate, there's no questions related to the way that money was spent, there's no questions related to was the payroll appropriate or anything like that. We, you know, we test, we get into, no issues there. What we did run into is a few instances where the city has a specific policy related to the approval of plus or minus, essentially plus or minus 40 hours on a, on a police officer's week, are supposed to run through a approval process for comp time and/or overtime pay. And there were some instances where that was not approved. Again, we looked to make sure and asked questions, looked to make sure that the payments were appropriate, there was nothing that we had issue with on the payments themselves, it was just the city not complying with its internal policy on the approvals themselves. And I don't know, Roy, or I don't know if y'all have anything else you'd like to speak to with that while we're in the middle of it, expand on it, anything like that.
I mean, that's, that's well said. I mean, we, we require all overtime and comp time type of transaction with every employee throughout the city to be approved from time to time. It doesn't happen. In this case, this grant specifically requires it to do it, and it was, it was a deficiency. And so it's correctable, it's been corrected, the police department, and I think we'll, you know, we'll be okay, but it's definitely a finding.
Are the comments being, I'm curious, are the comments being made specific as to what Texas requires or just a specific grant?
That specific grant.
Okay. I'm sure they all have different requirements.
All of them have very specific requirements that we go through and test. That's exactly right. Outside of that, I've got a list of other kind of our, we call them kind of our boilerplate required communications, and so I'll go through those here. As a reminder, we do perform the audit under generally accepted audit standards. It's important to understand that we audit this document that you guys have, the, the city prepares it, and this is probably a good time for me to jump in and point out the fact that city management, city staff goes through a lot of effort to put together the annual comprehensive financial report, which actually goes above and beyond what you require by statute, is required by statute of law, the municipal code. This includes a lot of additional information. There's, you know, probably 100 pages of additional information in here that's not necessarily required, but that you provide to the users of your financial statements so that they can kind of see history and trend and additional analysis information. So the city is to be commended for continuing to do that. We're not aware, we didn't identify any unusual transactions, anything that we would call aggressive accounting treatments or questionable accounting treatments, anything like that. I will point out that the city did adopt one new accounting standard during the year, all governments did, related to lease accounting. And so there is some additional disclosure and a change in kind of the presentation of leases on the financial statements. Those, for those of you that have dealt with this in the commercial world, it essentially adds an asset and a liability to offer all types of leases onto your financial statements, whether it's an operating-type lease or a capital-type lease. It's also important to point out that preparation of any set of financial statements includes some judgments and accounting estimates. We do go in and look at, for those significant estimates, we look at the way that they're prepared, look at the inputs into the methodologies, make sure that we feel like the estimates are appropriate within the scope of the financial statements. Couple of significant estimates that, that we look at for, for the city. And the utilities relate to usefulized capital assets, which impact directly, impacts depreciation, also pension and OPEB liabilities. City really doesn't have a whole lot of say there outside of their setting up the criteria related to the pension and OPEB terms, but they are technically an estimate that's put together by actuary, third-party actuary. We do not identify any difficulties or have any disagreements in dealing with management. I'd really appreciate the hard work on the finance and accounting department's staff. It is a lot of work to put together all the information that we request, and management is very transparent, getting us that information, getting it to us timely. They prepare for us very well, so we don't have to spend our time making journal entries, making adjustments. We can actually, we can actually spend our time auditing the financial statements and don't have to like actually clean them up. City, the city does a great job cleaning up the financial statements, getting them prepared for us so that we can do the audit. We did not have any independence issues. If we uncovered any independence issues as we were working, we'd be communicating that to you in advance of this meeting. It's also important to understand that there's about 250 pages of information here. We don't technically audit the entirety of the document. There's essentially a financial section that includes the financial statements themselves, the footnotes, and some combining schedules. That's really what we audit and give our opinion on. The rest of it is what we like to call an in relation to opinion, and you can read the details in our, in our audit report. But effectively, what it is saying is that we have read the rest of the document, we've compared it to the financial statements and the information that we're auditing. There are no material inconsistencies or anything that would mislead the users of those, of that additional information. It's also important to know that the footnotes to the financial statements are important. They give a, a lot of additional information to how the city is recognizing information in the financial statements themselves, so it's important to read those in conjunction with the financial statements. We did not have any audit adjustments this year, and we did not have any what we call past adjustments or uncorrected misstatements, so we'd be communicating those things to you. There are some adjustments that are made by management throughout the process. Essentially, the way that that usually works is management will give us, here's the, you know, they'll give us the financials at the very beginning, and they'll let us know, you know, we're still looking at some capital asset information, some AP information, you know, that sort of thing, so that we know in advance that there may be some adjustments coming. But that's no, that's nothing out of our work, that's them just kind of wrapping things up and closing the books, because there's a lot of work to be done between September 30th and when we, when we show up in late November, early December, so it's to be expected there are a few adjustments to get made after that. Outside of that, we really appreciate, like I said, the work on the finance department's part to get prepared for us, provide us with all the information. We certainly appreciate our relationship with the city, and I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all may have with respect to the audit itself.
Thank you, Mr. McCain and Mr. Viasana. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, not, not to the audit.
Okay. Members of the board of commissioners, any number of questions?
Well, just to say that we went through the audit investment committee, and Trump, they just was there with me, and a lot of was discussed, and we had staff, and we went through various other numbers, and we're, I was very, very impressed with the amount of work and, and actually the specifics of catching certain, certain things. I mean, if you catch something like that in the, in one of the, one of the grants, I mean, there's a lot of work that's done through the year, and I'm very, very satisfied with the work that Weaver has done.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, any questions for the board?
I want to give kudos out, management, get all of this and the staff. This is the heartbeat of the city, and we're just getting strong, and our city is strong, so. Makes our jobs a lot easier. Thank you.
City Manager, are we, any action to be taken? Yes, there is an action to take. City actually has a short presentation on the financial side- Very well. -of the, of the report.
Thank you, Roy. So today, I'll try to keep it brief. I'll give you a quick overview of the annual comprehensive financial report contents, what's in there, some highlights from our 2022 government-wide financial statements, as well as highlight the general fund. Then I'll get just a quick summary on the new government accounting standards. So the ACFR is prepared in-house, as mentioned, by Adam, by the finance department. It provides you a snapshot of the city's financial position, and it contains three major sections. Your introductory section, and in the, in the introductory section, you'll find a transmittal letter in the OR chart. The transmittal letter you might find useful, it gives you some history of the City of McAllen, some economic data, unemployment data, as well as ongoing and then completed projects for the year. The next section is your financial section, which includes the auditor's report, management discussion, analysis, financial statements, and notes to the financial statements. Here, you may find the MDNA pretty informative. It does provide you a narrative on the year-over-year variances, as well as information on debt and capital assets. And the last section is your statistical section, provides additional financial information, statistical data, and some trending information that may be useful. So here we have the government-wide statement of net position. We call it government-wide because it is inclusive of all funds, and so we're taking general fund, sanitation fund, water fund, wastewater, our international bridges, combining them all, adding long-term liabilities, long-term assets for a full accrual accounting presentation. And the city of McAllen has a very healthy net position. If we look at the total primary government, we have a total of 1.4 billion in assets, 493 million in liabilities, leaving us an unrestricted, I'm sorry, a total net position of 897 million. So here's some quick highlights on our statement of net position. Our assets increased by 143 million, and when we talk about assets, we're talking about cash, investment receivables- And when we talk about assets, we're talking about cash, investment receivables, other assets. And so what contributed to those increases was our sales tax came in at ten million over last year. We received sixty-three million of proceeds for Ansel Lewis expansion. We received our second tranche from ARPA for the ARPA funds of twenty-one million. And we, our, our net pension, we ended up with a net pension asset with TMRS of nine million. We also did see an increase of liabilities of eighty-five million. And a majority of that is related to the issuance of debt for the Ansel Lewis expansion of sixty-three million. Overall, our net position or owner's equity increased about fifty-five million. And that's a result of revenues performing well over expenditures. And you'll see that here on this next slide. This is our government-wide statement of activities. Again, it's inclusive of all funds on a full accrual accounting. Provide some highlights on that. Our total revenues overall increased by ten million. So we saw that ten million dollars increase in sales tax, two million dollars increase in property tax revenue, two million increase in hotel venue tax revenue and ten million charges for services. Now, we did have an offset to some of those increases of eight million of capital contribution and grants. And what happened there is we got a grant funded by Texas on 2021 for expansion, sorry, for a northbound project at the Ansel Lewis Bridge. And so we didn't have those grant funds in 2022, creating that variance. The other one is we had a drop in COVID and funds for the airport. And so there you see that drop. We received funds in 2021 and not in 2022, causing that variance in, in that particular revenue line. We also saw an increase in expenditures, thirty-four million. Twenty-seven of that is general government-related, four million is public safety, two million highways and streets and two million culture and recreation. So the increase in general government, we had eight million related to emergency food and shelter program. And another three million for the ARPA grants that we issued out. And then we have a ten million in the county adjustment to record our ownership interest in 2021 for the Texas A&amp;M building. We did work with our external auditors as well as Texas A&amp;M auditors who was Grant Thornton to make sure our books reflect the respective ownership on both sides. So the next slide is our, highlights our general fund performance. Revenues came in at a hundred and thirty-eight million, expenditures at a hundred and twenty-two. We had transfers into twenty million and transfers out of twenty-nine. Result in a net increase to our fund balance of six point seven million with an NDA fund balance of seventy-eight point six. Please keep in mind that fund balances before our current transfer out for the city hall project. So here you have your major increases and decreases to the general fund. Total revenues increased for general fund by eleven point eight million. Here we had eight million sales tax, three million property tax revenue. We also saw increases in franchise fees, licenses and permits, charges for services. But those increases were offset by a negative market value, a negative adjustment for market value of two point three million. Those are for some of the investments we hold. Now, there is no cash loss. We do hold our investments to maturity. This is just an accounting entry. We don't foresee ever realizing these kind of losses that are required by GASB. We have plenty of liquidity, so this is really just more of an accounting entry. For expenditures in general fund, we had a six million, six million dollar increase. And that is formally related to wages and benefits. So in 2022 was, we had the effect of the comp study as well as the collective bargaining, which included a four percent increase for public safety. The other side of that increase is related to repairs and maintenance. And a big chunk of that increase in repairs and maintenance, about six hundred thousand was related to fuel and lubricants. And then we saw another three hundred thousand related to facility maintenance. There was an increased cost to repaving of resurfacing of roads, it was about a hundred and seventy-three thousand and a couple of other small increases in other maintenance accounts. Overall, we did see an increase there. Our, our total transfers in did decrease by four point seven million. And that is as a result of our calculation for revenue replacement from the ARPA fund. So there was less to transfer in this year because our revenues performed well. As far as transfers out, we have a decrease of eight point four. And that is because in 2021, we had a one-time transfer out to the development corp for McAllen Cares expenses, which was a Wi-Fi and small business projects. And we also transferred less to the infrastructure and improvement fund. This next slide highlights our two major source of revenue. And you can see on the, on this slide here, there's property tax and revenue tax, sales tax revenue for general fund only. And you can see it has an upward trend, except in 2020 for sales tax when, when we felt the effects of COVID. But overall, there is a nice upward trend. And, and of that sixty-seven point five million of sales tax that we received in 2022, about twenty-two million goes to property tax relief. So we have to dedicate those funds as far as when we do our property tax rate calculation, half a cent's dedicated to maintaining our property tax rate low. But overall, if we include the development corp portion of these funds, we hit about ninety million in sales tax for the year. Here, I just want to highlight our state and federal grant expenditures are still averaging about sixty million. And this is mostly due to the emergency food and shelter program as well as the American, the ARPA funds that we received, as well as some of the other grants for some of the other funds. Here is just another recap of our fund balance and its trend. Shows that we've been responsible as far as maintaining a responsible fund balance. We ended the year with about two hundred and twenty-three days of operation. And again, this is before that transfer out that we did for this project, upcoming project. So audit results here, we had some GASB pronouncements we implemented, or we, we implemented GASB eighty-seven in 2022, which as Adam mentioned, changes how we account for leases. We have a new pronouncement to implement, GASB ninety-six, which kind of relates to software agreements, software maintenance. Again, we did have an unmodified opinion, which means our financial statements are reliable and accurate. And we'll be submitting our, our report to the GFOA for its program for review for excellence in financial reporting. A happy report we did receive for last year's report as well. And that concludes my presentation. I'll answer any questions.
Any members of the board of commissioners have any questions for?
Any questions? Utility?
No, sir.
And on behalf of the board of commissioners, I'll entertain the appropriate motion with regards to the capital.
Subdue.
For your second. Have a first and a second, all those in favor? No discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those against? Hearing none? Motion carries. For approval?
Second. No, sir. Aye.
I believe that concludes your part of the.
She can ascend already.
You can come anytime for those kind of good reports. Thank you, Mayor Paul Tim.
Thank you. Thank you. And I believe we'll continue our meeting from the dice.
Yeah, Mayor Paul Tim, if you'd like, it'll take us a few minutes to break this down. We can go into executive session and get that discussion.
All right, so at this time, Mr. City Attorney? We're recessed for a second. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, the items on item, I forgot which item it is. Nine are all of consideration in the executive session.
Very good. We'll recess to executive session.
Good evening, everybody. We are now continuing with our regular city commission agenda for Monday, March twenty seven, two thousand twenty-three, and we are continuing now with proclamations, the Great American Cleanup, and we have Commissioner Tony Aguirre making that proclamation. Commissioner?
Hi there, come on in.
Balance it out, balance it out. We apologize for the delay. I know a lot of people were here waiting, but we had to take care of some certain urgent matters, but we thank you all. This is a very, 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 very great committee. I love this place. I love these people. These guys are hard workers, and they give us a reason why to celebrate April fifteenth. Everybody knows April fifteenth is not normally what we think about celebrating, but we are celebrating April fifteenth here. I'll let you know. The City of McAllen, State of Texas, and the County of Idaho, whereas Keep America Beautiful, Inc., and Keep Texas Beautiful, Inc., in partnership with the national sponsors, has established the Great American Cleanup, the largest grassroots effort in the nation to organize and bring national attention to community involvement activities undertaken by this participating organization. And whereas caring citizens and volunteers of McAllen, and we have so many that get involved in this, in our surrounding communities, and all of the McAllen Independent School District campuses are committed and proud to do their part to sustain and improve the quality of life in McAllen. Whereas Keep McAllen Beautiful wishes to support the national, the nation's largest organized cleanup through the support of volunteers building on the foundation of pride and individual responsibility. And therefore, I, Tony Aguirre Jr., the City Commissioner of the City of McAllen, and in virtue of the authority vested to me and on behalf of the mayor and the city commission, do hereby proclaim April fifteenth as the Great American Cleanup and Don't Mess With Texas Trash Off Day.
Come on.
Thank you so much, Mr. Aguirre. Thank you for the City of McAllen, and on behalf of the Keep McAllen Beautiful Board and staff, we want to thank everyone for being here. Hi, my name is Chana Wiley. I am a second-year board member for Keep McAllen Beautiful and co-chair of the Great American Cleanup, and it's because of wonderful people like you all, like these people here, the people behind us, that make this city so beautiful, but it takes a little bit of elbow grease. So we do want to invite everybody on April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, to join us in the bicentennial, in the municipal park for the Great American Cleanup. It's from eight in the morning to twelve. We're going to have food, games, a lot of fun. We're going to be going to different spots around the city to pick up some trash to keep, continue keeping McAllen beautiful. So we really want to invite everybody, and thank you so much for being here. Please register online. We do still need volunteers, and we would love to see you there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
A T-shirt if you go to the event.
Oh, there's a T-shirt. There's a T-shirt involved, everybody. All right, moving right along with the last proclamation. The proclamation is for the Mayor's Monarch Pledge, presented by Commissioner Omar Quintanilla. Commissioner?
Good evening, everyone. Proud to give the following proclamation. Nice. Very appropriate. Quite lovely as well. Whereas the monarch butterfly is one of the most popular and iconic species in North America whose incredible multi-generational migration has captured the imagination of millions of Americans. And whereas to encourage the people of the City of McAllen to have fun celebrating the longest migration of any insect, the epic flight of the monarch, the city is hosting its annual monarch fest at Quinta Masatlan on Saturday, April first. And whereas the Monarch Fest two thousand twenty-three teaches families, students, scouts, and visitors the importance of all pollinators for ecosystem health, and how our community can make a difference by planting native milkweed and nectar plants. And whereas our native plants should be considered not only for their intrinsic beauty and value, but because they are essential components of our healthy ecosystem. And whereas, on behalf of the people of McAllen, who have already joined me in creating healthy habits for these magnificent butterflies, I'm proud to lead the way by signing the National Wildlife Federation Mayor's Monarch Pledge on behalf of the mayor, Villalobos. Now therefore I, Omar Quintanilla, City Commissioner of the City of McAllen, Texas, by the virtue and authority vested in me, on behalf of the mayor and the city commission, do hereby proclaim March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three as Mayor's Monarch Pledge Day. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Quintanilla. Thank you to First Position Dance Studio, to the most patient little monarchs joining us today. Yes, we can talk about that. My name is Jamie Brown Rosas, and I'm proudly representing the Friends of Quinta Masatlan. We're here to talk about the monarch festival that is happening this Saturday. Thank you again for committing to the Mayor's Monarch Pledge. Mayors who sign this pledge agree to implement numerous actions set by the National Wildlife Federation, including educating the public. We really rely on our city officials to let the public in the community know all of the great educational and exciting things that are happening at Quinta Masatlan, communicating the importance of this cultural icon, the monarch, with the support of McAllen Public Information Office and our media partners, planting native plants throughout the city, like the Anacohuita plant that my children planted this last weekend during the Tiny Forest Community Planting Day. Thank you, John Brush, for helping curious little children put trees in the ground, involving artists to tell the story. If you haven't seen the beautiful monarch mural that was done by international artist Irving Cano at Quinta Masatlan, it's definitely a must-see, growing and hosting native plant sales throughout the year at Quinta Masatlan. And lastly, and why we're here today, is we're really looking forward to hosting the Monarch Festival, again, taking place this Saturday from nine AM to two PM. You can get your tickets now online at Ticket Leap. The Monarch Festival is proudly presented by our friends at HEB. We're going to have over fifteen educational booths. There's going to be over thirty food and art vendor booths. We're going to have opportunities for our youth to earn badges, scout badges. We're going to have a lot of performances, exciting live performances on the main stage, and of course, the fan favorite, the Bug Parade, which takes place on Quinta Masatlan in the roads Quinta Masatlan at eleven AM. This celebration is made possible thanks to the valued support of HEB, Monarch Obstetrics, and Family Medicine, Whataburger, Televisa Noreste, Channel Five, and many more. Before I close, I really want to thank Colleen Hook and John Brush and the entire team at Quinta Masatlan. We wouldn't be able to have all of these wonderful and exciting events without that hard-working team. And lastly, wear your orange, wear your wings, and we hope to see all of you all, all, everybody here this Saturday at the Monarch Festival at Quinta Masatlan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Hook, for all you do there at Quinta Masatlan. All right, Mr. City Manager, you want to lead us with the next item?
Yes, sir. So our next item is our public hearing, and it'll start with two A, our routine items.
At this time, call the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Tonight, we have four items listed under routine. It's one rezoning and three conditional use permits. As always, they come with a favorable recommendation applying zoning commission and had no opposition. They can be approved in one motion or discussed separately as desired. They are a rezoning from R two to C three at twenty-two oh five, twenty-two oh nine, and twenty-two thirteen Newport Avenue, a conditional use permit renewal for three years at twenty-two forty-one Dallas Avenue Suites A and B, a life-of-the-use conditional use permit amendment at twenty-six hundred West Trenton Road, and a conditional use permit for one year at forty thirty-seven Expressway Suites one hundred, one oh five, and one ten.
All right. We've heard from Mr. Garcia regarding the items under two A, routine items. With regards to item two A one, rezoning at twenty-two oh five Newport Avenue, is there anyone here in opposition to the request? Anyone in opposition to item two eight two for a conditional use permit for an automotive service and repair at twenty-two forty-one Dallas Suite A and B? Anyone against the conditional use permit for lack of the use through amendment of an automotive service at twenty-six hundred West Trenton? And is there anyone here against the request for a conditional use permit for a term of one year for a social club at forty thirty-seven Expressway eighty-three Suites one hundred, one hundred and five, and one ten? Having decided the last four items, I've heard no one stand up to appear. I'll entertain a motion from the Board of Commissioners.
Motion to approve item two eight two one four.
Second.
Having heard a motion and a second, any need for further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those against, carry none, motion carries. Next item, sir.
Next item is rezoning from C three to R three A at one twenty South Fourth. This property's located northwest corner of Beaumont and South Fourth. It is zone C three. Adjacent zoning is C three to the north, west, and east, R one to the west and east, and then C one to the south. Surrounding uses include businesses, an auto shop, and single-family homes. The applicant is requesting R three A to replace the existing motel with a two-building apartment development. The development trend for this area is single-family homes and commercial is single-family homes and commercial uses. Staff did receive a letter in opposition citing traffic and parking concerns. The item was presented at the March seventh Plan and Zoning Commission meeting where one neighbor did show up in opposition, again citing traffic and parking and the previous notoriety of the premises for illegal activity. Plan and Zoning Commission recommended disapproval. Staff is recommending approval, however.
Okay. So this comes from the Planning and Zoning Commission with a disapproval recommendation. However, the Planning and Zoning Department is making or coming back with an approval or favorable recommendation.
Favorable recommendation.
So in this particular case, is there anyone against the request to rezone from C3 to R3A at 120 South Fourth Streets? If you can come up, sir, and just please state your name and address.
My name is Michael Lopez and I live at 419 Chicago, which is on the other block. And we are opposed to this from our neighborhood because for the past few years, all we had to do is deal with circling traffic that are trying to find, you know, ladies of the night. And we are opposed to this because if you rezone it, then there's no recourse that we have to object to any of the conditions of what might happen. Because if they sell the property, then it's going to be zone commercial and that's it. So we ask that you give us the conditional use permits so that we have at least some kind of recourse that we have the same kind of issues. Because if they decide to sell the property, then we won't have any recourse.
And just for point of clarification, Mr. Lopez, this is not a request for a conditional use permit. This is a rezoning
No.
From a commercial use to a residential use.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. And so your concern is what again?
We, they don't have enough parking there either. Because they have thirty-three units and they only have about twenty-three parking spaces. And so we're against that because they're short on the parking. And I've suggested to the gentleman that's been here, they should have built a two-story building. That would have helped because that would have increased the lot assignments for their parking and they're against doing that. And so there's other recourses other than that. But I would suggest knocking some of the rooms into larger spaces and that would eliminate the need for three or six spaces, but they would still come up short. So that's the reason.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Okay.
Anyone else in?
Real quick, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry. Real quick, so you're, you're probably because of the...
Oh, Mr. Lopez, I'm sorry.
Mr. Lopez, I'm sorry.
Could you come back? I'm sorry, one of the Commissioners had a question.
The objection of the neighborhood, at least you on Chicago Street, is the traffic that he might generate?
Yeah.
The parking?
Well, in the past, when it was just the motel...
How long ago was that, Mr. Lopez?
Till it shut down. It's been on a constant basis.
How long was that?
About a year. Yeah, it's just as of last year. So, and what, the motel was there, has been there since seventies, the early seventies. I know because my parents built the house that I'm in right now in sixty-four. And before then, there was no traffic until the motel was built.
In the seventies?
Yeah. And only that, but I mean, there's been several murders at the, at the location. I know Inahosa had one of his nephews that was killed there.
One of them, and I'm just trying to... I did planning and zoning for twelve years and I was eight years as a chairman.
Yeah.
The R3A, in my view, Mr. Lopez, I think is going to protect you guys more than a C3 just because if they want to go ahead and operate a motel, they can do it without being, coming here and asking for it. You know, that's the nature of the, of the, of the commercial part of it.
Exactly, and that's what we're against.
And then we might incur now in the same problem that you guys had for the past years. So I'm very familiar with the, with the area.
It's been forty years.
If we do a multifamily, that's going to protect you guys a lot more because it's a lesser, a lesser...
Less intense use.
Yes, it's a lot lesser zoning that will protect you guys a lot, a lot more. We can go ahead and check on different avenues to see how can this work. But that, in my experience, that's going to protect you a lot more than, than leaving us as a three, C3. I'll be more proclered to leave it as a C3 than to do the rezoning to, to, to an R3A.
Well, the thing is, is as neighbors around the area, how would we be able to report any problems? That's, that's the reason we were asking for a conditional use.
What we can do, just an idea. Sometimes with the zonings come financials for the, for the companies. What I can, I can try to do, if the rest of the commission is okay with that, I can ask for a temporary CUP.
Right.
For, let's say, nine months and see how this business operates and do. And if they're doing fine and there's nothing, no, no problem, we can go ahead and, and continue with, with, with the rezon request maybe. And that'll give us a lot of peace of mind to both parties.
Commissioner, I feel we're jumping ahead a bit. This is only a rezoning request, right? So I think...
That is correct. But at the end of the day, we, we can go ahead and, and deny the rezoning. I mean, put, put a condition into it as a CUP.
You can't, you can't condition zoning, Commissioner. You, you would have to deny the zoning request.
Yeah. I agree with, with the Commissioner's initial comments as related to security and the issues that the neighborhood is having. The C3 definitely opens you up to significantly more, I think, density, more activity. A motel obviously can be, can turn overnight. Based on the pictures and the renderings that they submitted, it's going to be a significant revitalization of the property itself. You're going to probably, I would assume the rents themselves would, would bring in more established kind of residents, right? People who would become your neighbors, not just strangers staying the night.
Yeah, but again, if they maintain the thirty-three units that they want, they're still not going to have any parking and...
Yeah, and I think, since we're only at a rezoning request, I don't mean to cut you off.
Yeah.
We, we're really only deciding on the rezoning.
Right.
When they apply for the permits related to construction, to plans, in planning, all that gets assessed for minimum requirements for parking. All that can be addressed with the planning department as to what would be needed for the number of units, right? We don't, we don't see their plans in that, in that sense.
That's correct, Mr. Lopez. We're, at this point, we're just looking for the, for the use and the applicant is making a rezon with regards to minimum lot size, the number of parking spaces required, based on the size of the units, how many units. There's a lot of restrictions and standards that the city has set forth. And this is not to even count retention, right, for, for stormwater drainage. There's still a lot of requirements that must be met in terms. It may actually result in a reduction in the number of apartment use. I'm not saying that would happen, but there, this is just a very first preliminary step. It may be that this is not going to be financially beneficial to the applicant or to the owner to do this ultimately. But I can tell you this. Being in a residential 3A apartment is a less intense use than commercial. Because commercial, one, opens up a wide variety of different businesses as you already come to know.
That's what we've had to deal with.
And based on what I've worked, I've been working at the District Attorney's Office, this particular location is very, very, very familiar to me.
Yeah.
Exactly what you described is true and correct. I am not even going to challenge that.
And so I've turned gray because since I've lived there.
I need more.
So, so unfortunately, this location has a poor reputation. But we have an applicant here who apparently has vision, maybe an interest in gentrifying the location to something else that would actually provide stability.
The concern we have is that, let's say that happens and then in a year's time, they decide to sell the building.
Right.
Because this is, is an investment company that's doing this. And so to me, that means that they'll probably get started with the project and then after a year or two, turn around, decide to sell it if they need cash flow.
Again, the issues you raise are obviously pertinent to you as a resident, but this is beyond the scope of the purpose of this hearing to rezon.
At the end of that, and I'm sorry, real quick, I'm sorry. At the end of the day, Mr. Lopez, if we, if we keep it C3, it's going to generate probably more traffic than you're concerned about.
Yeah, I know.
And you won't be protected as much as if we do a multifamily. We're trying to protect the neighborhood a little bit. I know, I know the zone. I know a lot of people that live right, right behind it and everything. So I think the best way to protect you guys is going with a lesser zone like the Mayor Protam and Commissioner Haddad have been saying.
I mean, the multifamily zoning is going to restrict it to primarily multifamily residential rentals, right? And to your concerns, I think, of it selling, highly likely, possibly in the future, most multifamily or rental properties sell multiple times. But I can tell you typically, the nature of that property stays the same.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in opposition to the rezoning? And is the applicant here? Okay. All right. I'll entertain the appropriate motion.
Yeah, Paul, if you can explain us just real quick about the project. Just for everybody to know a little bit about what's going on.
Commissioner, I think you have a legitimate question, but I don't want it to go too much in detail beyond just the rezoning part.
Buenas tardes.
That has to be the rezoning, sir.
Yo soy vecina del hotel. Tengo veinticinco años viviendo ahí. Ha habido muchos casos malos, pero era cuando era el hotel. Ahora es, están haciendo apartments y me da gusto porque van a hacer algo más bonito ahí. So yo pienso estoy de acuerdo que si se pongan el hotel, si lo ponen mal o algo, pues me imagino que se puede cerrar. Pero pienso yo que está bien que lo pongan para que se vea más bonito el, el área donde vivemos. Como digo, tengo veinticinco años. Yo antes miraba muchas cosas de las mujeres. Ahora yo no veo nada, pues me imagino que se va a mejorar. Pero...
¿Su nombre, señora?
Teresa Luna. Teresa Luna.
¿Y su ubicación?
Es cuatro veinte Beaumont. Es enseguida del hotel donde estaba el hotel antes.
Gracias, señora.
Yes, gracias.
Anyone else with regards to opposition or for the rezoning?
Well, given the fact that, like, we all stay with Mr. Lopez and I understand their concern definitely, but trying to protect the neighborhood more, this rezoning has me a lot more peace of mind and it seems that, that the rest of the commission will do too on trying to protect, of course, your investments, your families, and at the same time to beautify the, the area and bring more economic development. So I think it's, it's a good balance. I'm going to push a motion to approve the rezoning.
Heard a motion, they're here a second.
Second.
Having heard a second, any further discussion? If not, all, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, hearing none, motion carries. Next item.
This is an initial rezoning, or zoning rather, to R3A at 2700 Sprague Road. The property is located along the north side of Sprague, approximately nineteen hundred feet west of Twenty-third. The parcel measures just under twenty acres. Adjacent zoning is R1 to the northwest and south, R3A southwest, and ETJ. Uses include single-family homes, agricultural land, and vacant land. The applicant is requesting R3A for an apartment development. The item was presented at the March seventh Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. There was no opposition and it was unanimously recommended for approval.
We have a favorable recommendation on this item to be two, 2700 Sprague Road. Is there anybody here against the rezoning or initial zoning to R3A, multifamily residential? Hearing none, what is the pleasure of the commission?
Motion approved.
Thank you.
They're a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Same sign, motion carries, next item.
This is a rezoning from R1 to C4 at 4401 North Jackson Rear. This property is located on the rear portion, oh, sorry, of land fronting North Jackson, approximately twelve hundred feet north of Nolana. Adjacent zoning is R1 to the east, C3 to the north and south, and then R3A to the north and west. Surrounding uses include apartments, agricultural land, and vacant land. The applicant is requesting C4 for a classic car storage facility. Development trend for this area are apartments and commercial uses. The item was presented at the March seventh Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. There was no opposition and it was unanimously recommended for approval. Staff is recommending disapproval, not so much for the use that's proposed, but for the other uses that C4 would allow.
Okay. We have anybody here against the request to rezone from R1, single-family, to C4 at 4401 North Jackson Road?
We do have the applicant.
And we do have the applicant here. And this does come from, with a favorable recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. However, there is a partial disapproval by your department, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll entertain the appropriate motion from this board for approval or denial of the rezoning.
Promoted.
They're here a second.
Second.
Having heard a second, any need for further discussion?
Well, I'd like to ask about this a little bit because it seems like the rezoning to C4 would be a pretty significant jump from R1.
Correct.
And I know the intended use of it, but wouldn't we be opening up ourselves to a lot of different uses for that property? What, what could go in a C4?
So C4 could do heavy equipment sales, freight terminal, wholesale, trade of livestock, petroleum bulk stations, scrap yards. And so those are the concerns that we have, right? Not so much with classic car storage. I think it's perfectly fine.
I think I would have the same concerns as you do.
Very hard to do a lot of those on six acres.
Yeah, at those prices.
Yeah. So what they're looking to do, though, wouldn't fit on a C3?
Unfortunately, no. So C3 allows storage, but it's only household storage. And so it's basically anything that's inside a home as opposed to cars, which is why we, we have to jump them to C4.
It can't be C3 with a CUP?
They can do a plan unit development if they're open to that.
A PUD?
A PUD, yeah. I mean, that's certainly an option.
Are they, are they familiar with, with, with a PUD? And, and, and have they, have they, you know, are they concurrent with you? I mean, are they?
I don't believe staff has discussed the, the option with the plan unit development, to be completely honest with you, but I will turn around and ask.
They talked about the plan unit development even?
No. No.
Okay.
We can table it and we can have that discussion if necessary.
Because what it, what it does is it makes you, whatever you want to do today, that we can, with the PUD, you, you have to adhere to what you're going to do. It cannot be anything else. So it is a, a big restriction on what the future of that property can be. So we have to understand that.
But they still need to rezon it out of residential for a PUD, right?
Correct.
But that, that area is, you know, residential, it is really commercial. It is a commercial area, okay? So, but a PUD restricts you to only what you want to do initially.
What, what zoning does self-storage facilities fall under?
C3.
Oh, C3.
But those are household storage, though.
But you can put a car in a storage unit.
That's not the way we've interpreted. Yeah, we've discussed that, that that's not normally how we've interpreted household storage.
That's why, that's why I figured a C three rezoning would be more fitting to the area. And then the city could look at doing a CUP, right? For, I guess the variance aspect of multiple cars, I don't know, I mean.
I think that would kind of limit our exposure in terms of the future of where, the direction of that particular parcel and the parcels around it would go. Going with a C three and then doing either a cup or a variance.
Because then the CUP stays with the applicant, right? I mean, it stays with them as the operator. Anyone else that would purchase a property, then have to use it in a C three setting or apply for their own type of.
You wanna rescind and send it to C three?
What is the pleasure of the commission?
Tony?
I'd like it C four.
You can rescind and then table it and then we can bring, bring it back at the next meeting, allow them.
I don't know if the applicant wants to, um, chime in at all.
Okay.
Kind of making decision on their behalf.
That's a good point.
If their request.
Sir, can you please state your phone name and your address, sir?
Yes, sir. Rudy Terino, my address is fourteen twenty-four West Rogers Road.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Terino, go ahead. Uh, so we're kind of interested to find out what your purpose or intent is with the rezoning.
For self-storage, we wanted to just see if we can do classic car self-storage as well, because we want to offer AC units, which is about thirty to forty percent of the whole storage unit. Besides everything else being self-storage or household items, we thought the same way you do, that the vehicle would be considered one of those. Or even an RV, to have RV storage for anyone who, because everywhere around there's apartment complexes. There's not enough room for them to buy and, and own an RV or even have a classic car to trust in those areas. So a self-storage unit with, we would have, like, with your guys' approval, we'd be able to offer that to the city and to the area.
And how is this property accessed? Redbud?
Right now it's outside of Redbud.
Yes, sir.
Oh, it's off Redbud?
Off Redbud.
That's the only way to access it.
And, and so everything, I guess, what is that, K Center Street, everything west of that, is that, uh, multifamily?
Would you be opposed to AC three? I mean, I know you're trying to get it out of residential.
We were recommend, okay, so we, we first applied for C three, not knowing that that would be a problem with the vehicles.
Okay.
And when we talked about there's any way to add some kind of clause in there for us just to allow vehicles and for us to use it for only that purpose, we were told that, I wasn't really told nothing after that. So we, we went forward and applied for C, I mean, for C four, sorry about that, for C four and to see how it would go. I was never given another recommendation or another way out to go about it.
That's why you're going for a C four?
Yes, sir. Because I, I, when I, when I went into the city first and spoke about it, I heard their worries and I understand them completely. And I don't even want to do it for that reason, I just want to be able to hold classic cars and RVs. That's my only one for my self-storage units.
Mr. Garcia, would, um, consideration of C three with maybe a variance or cup, kind of, uh, address some of the concerns that you raised?
I like that, but also jumping to something saying he still has to go through the CUP process. Planning and zoning has to hear it and has to come back to us. So I'd leave the commission open to.
Open for a C four.
So we always heard a motion, a second to approve for the rezoning.
C four will give you everything.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those against, say aye, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
So the ayes have it and one opposed by Commissioner Quintanilla.
I oppose as well.
I'm sorry, two.
Not opposing your project, really I would prefer C three zoning, but you'll still get it.
Okay, let the record reflect it, three to two, uh, opposition by Commissioner Quintanilla and opposition by Commissioner Haddad. All right. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Next item, two C, conditional use permits.
Yes, sir, this is a conditional use permit, uh, for life of the use for Horizon Montessori Public School at three twenty North Main. This property is located along the east side of North Main between Cedar and Date Palm. It is comprised of nine lots. Uh, adjacent zoning is C three to the west, north and south, R three A to the east. Surrounding uses include condos, Archer Park, uh, office buildings and apartments. The applicant is requesting CUP for continued operation of a Montessori school, which has thirty-one classrooms. The initial CUP was approved in twenty-eleven and the last renewal was December of twenty-twenty-one. The item was presented at the March seventh Plan Zoning Commission meeting. There was no opposition, but there was discussion on time. Uh, P and Z recommends three years to continually reassess traffic. The applicant is amenable to those three years and that's what we're recommending as well.
All right. You've heard from Mr. Garcia. This item comes with a favorable recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. However, with the caveat that it'll only be a cup for three years and to monitor traffic flow around the, the, uh, the property. Uh, is there anyone here against the request by the applicant for a condition use permit for life of the use of an institutional use? Okay, having heard none, what is the pleasure of the commission?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, have a second. Any need for further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Next item.
Uh, the next item, which is a condition use permit for life of the use at sixty-eight twenty North Taylor Road. The applicant has requested tabling, that she was not able to come today.
I'll entertain the appropriate, uh, motion?
Motion to table the item.
Do I hear a second? Okay. Item tabled. Next item, two D, meeting the zoning ordinance of the city McAllen. I'll entertain the appropriate motion.
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, hearing none, motion carries. Next item.
This is the annexation at twenty-seven hundred Sprague Road. This is for the property that was just rezoned to R three A. Again, it does measure just under twenty acres. It's for a proposed apartment development. Uh, no subdivision has been submitted at this time, but they would need to subdivide. Um, staff does recommend approval and annexation.
So this item was previously heard under item two B two for initial zoning. I'll entertain the appropriate motion.
Promote.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any need for discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, hearing none, motion carries. And that concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda. Next item, consent agenda. We have items three A through K. If there's any one item that any one, uh, member of the Board of Commissioners would like to take out of, of the item and to be heard. Hearing none, I'll entertain the appropriate motion to approve all items under three A through three K.
Promote.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
I'd like to note that I will abstain from items three K four and three K five.
That's three K four and three K five, said items. Commissioner Haddad will execute a conflict of interest form. Okay, next item, four, bids and contracts, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir, we've got an award contract for annual surveying services for twenty-twenty-three.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem and Commission. Staff negotiated fees with eight firms. All firms have agreed to the proposed rates. The negotiated fees reflect a twelve percent increase from the twenty-nineteen rate structure. Staff recommends award of contract to the eight firms for one year with the option to extend for an additional two years in one-year increments with the city manager's approval. And we open it up for any questions.
Promote.
Second.
Having heard the motion, a second, any need for further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Next item.
Four B is award of contract for the North Gate Lane Drainage Improvements.
The project proposed will install five thousand six hundred, uh, linear feet of new storm sewer infrastructure to include inlets, roadside wells and related pavement reconstruction. The project is funded through the flood mitigation assistance program. Staff recommends award of the contract to the lowest responsive bidder, Texas Cordia Construction LLC of Edinburgh, Texas, in the amount of one million, three hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars with twenty-five cents and a contract time of two hundred and fifty calendar days. And we open it up for any questions.
Did you say Texas Cordia?
Yes, sir.
Texas Cordia.
Yeah.
We've heard from staff with a recommendation.
Promote.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any further need for further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Next item.
Four C is consideration approval of contract amendment number one for professional engineering services for hike and bike trail phase two.
Mayor Pro Tem and Commission, the request is for a contract amendment to provide for additional engineering services to design three intersections to make the project ADA accessible with new proposed, with our new proposed hike and bike trail. Staff recommends award of the contract amendment to GDJ Engineering for an additional service in the amount of twenty-four thousand dollars. And we open it up for any questions.
Where's the location for this improvement again?
So there, there are three intersections, it's Tenth and Wisconsin, uh, McCollum, Wisconsin, I think Jackson, Wisconsin. We had realigned, we made a realignment of the hike and bike trail and then we need to make the ADA compliance for the signals, that wasn't part of the scope.
Okay. Was the original alignment gonna be a little bit closer to the drainage ditch?
We were gonna, after we got past Second Street, we were gonna go behind the ditch.
Behind it, okay.
Yes, sir.
And now it's gonna go follow along all the way through?
It'll come along Wisconsin, uh, into Edinburgh through Wisconsin now.
Very well. We've heard from staff with regards to the recommendation for the, uh, contract amendment. I'll entertain the motion.
Motion approved.
Do I hear a second? Having heard a second, any need for further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Next item.
G is consideration approval of change order number two for the Daffodil Avenue roadway widening.
Change order number two consists of an unmapped twelve-inch irrigation line in conflict with the pro, proposed storm sewer line for the project. The work is necessary to properly install the proposed storm sewer system. Hefn Associates and the Engineering Department recommend approval of change order number two in the amount of seventeen thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars.
Promote.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further, need for further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Next item.
Thank you.
Four E is consideration and selection for delinquent tax collection services.
Mrs. Greggs.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and City Commissioners. The following item is consideration of an award contract for delinquent tax services. On January the twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, purchasing and contract received three responses, which two of the respondents were ranked very closely. At your request, on the March twenty-seventh meeting, we scheduled a special meeting to interview both firms. So that brings us back to today's agenda item.
Very well, staff makes a rec, is making a recommendation for award contract for delinquent tax collection services from Leinberger, Dogen, Blair and Sampson, LLP from Edinburgh, Texas. And as we capitulate, we had a presentation last Wednesday for March twenty-seventh. I'm hoping that everyone had an opportunity to ask questions at that, uh, presentation, uh, as needed and was satisfactory with the responses. And I'll entertain a motion from the board.
I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Having heard a second, any need for further discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Hearing none, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Greggs.
Have a good evening.
Likewise.
Five A is providing for an amendment to the zoning ordinance relating to commercial side setbacks.
Commissioners, currently our zoning ordinance requires commercial setbacks, um, to be either one foot back for every two foot in height for the building or built to the lot line with a firewall. There really is no in-between. Uh, the ordinance, well, their only option right now is to go to ZBOA. Uh, the proposed ordinance would allow commercial setbacks to be reduced as long as a firewall is provided in accordance with the building code requirements. Uh, this would allow projects to move forward in a timely manner without having to wait for ZBOA. Uh, the ordinance comes with favorable recommendations from the ORC and Plan and Zoning.
Promote.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further, need for further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Six A is a variance, uh, consideration for the reduction in pavement width and escrow requirements for Warrior Drive at twenty-three oh one North Ware Road.
Sir, Harvest Creek at Ware Phase One is a one hundred and thirteen lot subdivision consisting of about forty-one acres at the northwest corner of Ware and Warrior slash Vine. Uh, it is zoned R three A, surrounding uses include, uh, Nikki Rose, single-family homes and vacant land. Project engineers requesting a variance to the paving width and the escrow requirements for Warrior Drive, um, which is a collector street that requires eighty feet of rideaway and fifty-two feet of paving. Uh, the development is dedicating their share of the required rideaway, but they're requesting to maintain the existing width, which is around forty to forty-two throughout, uh, development. Uh, the basis for the request is that they are developing a hike and bike trail, uh, which the developer is providing along the north side of Warrior, uh, that'll connect to the Benson Trail. P and Z reviewed the request at the March seventh meeting and unanimously recommended approval. There are three options before you, staff is recommending option one, which is, uh, approving the request as requested.
Promote.
Second.
Having heard a motion, a second. Any need for further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, which I, item one?
Yeah.
Option one.
Option one, but staff recommended.
Okay. Uh, all those, okay, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Next item.
Seven A is a review of our quarterly investment report for a quarter ending December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you, Roy. Uh, the, the report before you was approved, uh, by the Investment Audit Committee on March twenty-third, uh, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, it was prepared in accordance with the Public Funds Investment Act as well as the city's investment policy. Uh, the portfolio had a book value of five hundred, of about five hundred and four million with a yield maturity of two point eight nine one percent. Uh, if there's, if there are no questions, staff does recommend approval.
We've heard the recommendation from staff, I'll entertain the appropriate mo, does require a motion?
Yes.
Yes, it does.
Yes, yes.
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Having heard a motion, a second, any need for further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Hearing none, motion to approve passes. Next item.
Seven B is advisory board appointments.
Mrs. Lada.
Evening, Mayor Pro Tem and, uh, City Commissioner. The item before you is for advisory board appointments. Um, the nominations are highlighted in blue. I received nominations from Commissioner Aguirre to the Conventions Civic Center Board, from Commissioner Castillo to the Traffic, uh, Commission Board, and from Mayor Pro Tem to the Parks Advisory Board. Also, all the names that are highlighted in green are eligible for reappointment in case you wanna, you wish to reappoint. And just a reminder that anybody that's, uh, highlighted in yellow, they have, uh, either resigned or they have, uh, missed fifty percent of the meetings per, uh, ordinance twenty thirteen dash one oh four. And those that are highlighted in orange have turned out and are no longer eligible for reappointments.
Very well, are there any other additional, uh, nominations or appointments other than those already proffered by Mrs. Lada? And if not, I'll entertain the appropriate motion to approve the said nominations and reappointments as already dictated by the city secretary.
Promote.
Do I hear a second? Having heard a motion, a second to approve said nominations and reappointments, any further need for discussion? Hearing none, none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Next item.
C is Immigration and Respirity Center Report.
Honorable Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, just a quick update, immigrant drop-off numbers remain fairly stable. Uh, for the last six weeks, we've had an average of about eight hundred and twenty-three, it's eight hundred and twenty-three point five, um, average drop-offs per day. Last week we were at nine hundred and forty-one and this week we were at eight hundred and nineteen. Our COVID positivity rate two weeks ago was zero point nine percent and this last week was two point five percent. Ansel Dos Park remains in standby mode with the ability to surge if needed, and we continue to work with our federal and regional partners in anticipation of May the eleventh, which is the current expiration date for Title Forty-two, to see what impact that'll have. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any member of the board have any questions for Mr. Garcia? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Next item, seven D, future agenda items. Our city secretary had the opportunity earlier before the commencement of this meeting to pass around the checklist. Uh, I'd like to see if we can have an update on our streetlight audit, quote unquote, as well as our alley improvements at some future workshop, Mr. City Manager.
Very good.
I thought we were supposed to have that, a report on, uh, on the streetlight audit, that, I, I wanted that last time.
Is there anything else? Okay, if not, we'll go on to the next item, tabled items, item, item eight A.
Eight A is consider, well, does this come off the table? Stayed tabled, so.
Stayed tabled.
Uh, B, consideration approval of an ordinance updating the city's fireworks regulations. Chief.
Do we have a motion to remove the item from the table?
Promote.
Having heard a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Mayor Pro Tem, uh, we can discuss it, uh, here, we had it in the workshop and didn't get to it, so we can either discuss it here or, uh, bring it back to workshop. But I think it might be a good thing to go ahead and, and tell you what we think, we heard you say.
Yes, sir.
And then if there's changes, we can make that change and bring it back.
Very well.
That is great, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner, City Manager. So, um, uh, after taking it to workshop first time around, coming to a commission, then back to workshop, if, uh, we understood correctly, out of the two options that we had provided at the last meeting, we had option one, which was basically everything, uh, will fall only under city-sponsored events. That's both exterior large displays and, uh, interior smaller displays where the utilization of sparklers would take place. That was option one, only city-sponsored events, not allowing that. Sponsor, uh, I'm sorry, option two was gonna be the, um, option to be able to provide, uh, for both big displays and small displays. The request was to give you a hybrid of those two, to where the large displays was gonna be only large, uh, displays, but allowing, uh, with the proper, uh, regulations allowing for the sparklers and in, indoor events. So that is the option that we're gonna be bringing to you, um, the, the hybrid of the two. You know, taken into account that, um, you know, those, those individuals operating the sparkling machines, they would be required to be certified, uh, power techniques under the state of Texas. And of course, it would be required to be, uh, present during, uh, every time they operate those machines.
Uh, your, your recommendation is still only to proceed with option one?
Uh, well, our recommendation would still always be option one, considering that those machines, yes, they are safe, but they're as safe as the individual operating them and they are as safe as the environment around them. Um, you know, that, you know, anything, any decorations, anything that is liable will still be susceptible to catching fire, even though those machines are as safe as they can be. Our consideration, I'm sorry, our recommendation would still be option one, however, you know, we can, we can still.
However, you know, we can, we can still provide option number three.
Well, the only thing correction that I'll make is that the city commission has decided that you did not want option one and for us to bring an hybrid.
Correct.
So that we don't have that discussion again. I think that decision was already made.
Right, that was where we, the direction from the board, to go back to staff, that's correct. So what is the pleasure of the of the board?
And this option three?
Well, it was on workshop. It's not here.
Oh.
Yeah, the option three will will provide for only city-sponsored events on the large displays, but we would allow for the sparklers and smaller indoor events to take place.
What do you mean by sparklers?
The the sparkling machine. Yeah, so so we're talking about the electric machines that you, there are electronic machines, you can connect them, and they do emit some sparks that are, those are the ones that are called coal fires. They still, they still have a certain degree of danger. Again, given, given the environment which they're operated at, but they can, they can be at a loss.
No, there's no boom, they don't fly into the sky.
They're permanently installed in at most of the restaurants that are using them. Some of these restaurants are using them five days a week. I mean.
Correct.
Yeah, Mula.
Mula, the one downtown, South Seventeen Taboo.
Yeah.
To recapitulate the options, option one is only city-sponsored displays. Option two is private displays with stipulations. And as this board had discussed at our last meeting, was the creation of proposed option three, which would allow only city-sponsored events for large, for large outdoor displays and also allow private displays with stipulations that would include sparkler, yeah, sparkler fountain systems and similar flame effects.
That is correct, sir.
But that would be, what would be the stipulation, like, would that be a permit?
Yes, that will be a permit. The permit will be good for six months and the cost of it will be five hundred dollars.
Five hundred dollars every six months for a restaurant that's open ten years? Assuming that it's always a constant feature, that seems.
Well, one of the things.
That seems a lot of extra work even for you guys and for the city.
We want to make sure that the person that's responsible for the training and oversight is there. That could change. If the five hundred is is the big deal, then maybe we reduce it, but the the most important part is for us to ensure that there's a person that knows how to operate this.
And then we go and we're able to go.
Six months comes and goes pretty quick. If, if you guys are comfortable sending out an inspection, let's say to a restaurant every six months, right, to kind of checklist and and make sure the training's there and the personnel is there.
That is correct. I mean, we we can do that. They would have to come and make the request.
Definitely doesn't bog down what I would call fire inspections for permits and some of our other processes, right? I don't want it held up by something like this because we do get a lot of, you know, business community, you know, especially permitting and inspection.
Yeah. Having to go back and.
Well, just turnaround time, right, is critical for businesses, so.
That is correct, sir. At at the same time, we, at the same time, we want to make sure that whatever they're going to operate this unit, we want to make sure that they're being utilized and installed properly to avoid any fires from happening.
I got a question. So the fireworks display that happened at the country club a month ago or so, how many of those a year have have we done in the last couple of years? Do you do you recall?
I I don't have an exact amount. I mean, that obviously that don't happen every single day or every week. It will probably be a handful of them, I know, and and, you know, per year.
Okay.
But when it comes to the utilization of sparklers and and those type of items, that is a more more common application.
There's probably two or three.
And those are, those sparklers are mostly indoors in restaurants, those kind of.
They can be utilized both indoor and outdoors, but the main concern is indoors.
Okay.
So for sure, if this board were to go under option three, there would be no privately run or operated large outdoor displays?
That is correct.
Okay. But it would also, but it would allow for indoor or smaller displays?
Yeah, that is correct.
So what is the pleasure of this board?
I like option three. Subject to, I think, a reasonable, maybe the upfront permit fee can be five hundred, but I think if you're doing renewals, it's gotta be. You know, I know we need, you need to charge for the time and the expertise.
That is correct.
But it's gotta be more of a renewal inspection fee than a full permit fee to me.
I hear you. Five hundred and then two fifty.
I'll say even less, I'll say five hundred and like a hundred, but every six months, it's a, it's a cost.
Yeah, it's fair and square.
But they are, they're getting value from that.
Correct, five hundred and then a hundred, yeah. A motion to study?
I'll entertain a very wordy motion at this point.
I'll make a motion for what we described as option three with the permit fee to be five hundred. New permit, a hundred dollars, renewal. Every six months.
Very well stated. Thank you. Having heard a second, any need for further discussion? If none, I'll entertain, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Okay, we have one opposition, that's Commissioner Omar Quintanilla. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next item, number nine, executive session, Mr. City Attorney.
Mayor Pro Tem, with respect to item nine A one, I recommend that the city commission adopt adopt a committee and a process as described in executive session.
Yeah, here any nominations to be on that committee from any member of the board?
I would nominate Tony Aguirre and Pepe cabeza de vaca.
Okay, do you hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, hearing none, motion carries. Next item.
Mayor Pro Tem, with respect to item nine A two, I recommend the city commission authorize staff to proceed with the human resources matters consistent with the description in executive session.
Having heard description of the said item, do I hear a motion?
No moves.
Do your second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those again, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Next item.
With respect to item nine B one, I recommend the city commission authorize city attorney and city manager to negotiate the economic or to offer the economic development incentives within the parameters described in executive session.
Do I hear a motion?
No move.
Do your second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those again, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Next item.
With respect to item nine B two, I recommend that the city commission adopt a motion authorizing staff to proceed with the economic development options described in executive session.
Having heard recitation of the item, do I, I'll entertain the appropriate motion.
Reserving one, I'm sorry, if I could just add reserving the one item to bring back.
Oh, that's right. Seven set for one item.
Motion to approve. Second.
Having heard a motion, a second, any further need for discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say same sign. Hearing none, motion to approve seven, except that one item is, motion carries.
With respect to item nine C, I recommend the city commission adopt a motion authorizing the city attorney to proceed with the litigation strategy described in executive session.
I'll entertain a motion. Do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those again, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. And I believe that concludes our agenda for March twenty seventh, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Regular city commission meetings are held on the second and fourth Monday of each month. Meetings are rebroadcast on Tuesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays on the McAllen Cable Network.
Given by Commissioner Pepe cabeza de vaca.